Call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call a roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Dr. Joel Schroeder, I believe is absent. Mr. Justin Smith.
Here.
Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And Ms. Diane Nguyen is absent. I believe we have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you.
I believe Ms. Diane did say that she was going to be coming later, so.
Oh, did she?
She may be here.
Thank you for that information. Appreciate it. All right. So evening, we have Dr. or Father David Lees to lead us in prayer from Church of the Resurrection. Father Lees.
In the name of the Father, and of His Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we pray your blessing upon this meeting this evening, on these civil servants, these citizens attending the meeting. Pray that the agenda might be a source of unity for the community of Bel Air. Tonight especially, Lord, we pray for your watchfulness and protection of all those who may be affected by this winter weather that we're experiencing. For the safety and shelter particularly of those who lack those basic human needs, shelter, clothing, warmth, food. May we be your hands, your feet, your eyes, your ears to look out for our neighbor in need, for protection on all those who are helping our communities during this time. Those who will be ensuring the safety of our roadways, our cities, our travelers. Watch over all those who tonight are serving the greater need. Help us, Lord, to be attuned to your will. Give us wisdom to understand rightly the concerns that come before us as a community, and your blessings again upon all those who will enter into this meeting. Father, you sent your son, Jesus, to save us, and your Holy Spirit to sanctify us. We invoke you upon this meeting through Christ our Lord, amen. In the name of the Father, and of His Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Due to the scheduled miscommunication, we will not have the Boy Scouts this evening, so I will lead in Pledge of Allegiance. Please join.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the equality for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to determine agenda additions? Are there any agenda additions to consider?
Mr. Mayor, I've asked City Council about this, but I'm not sure what the correct answer is. Do we need to bring back the two items we tabled from the first meeting in January?
They are actually back on this agenda, the change order.
Yeah, but they're one item instead of two, and they're different amounts.
Right, so technically you won't have, you don't have to bring back that item. You can address it in this fashion as it exists on the agenda unless you would like to clean up that item and put it back on the agenda and just vote it down. You can do that as well.
You guys care. Nobody cares. I guess we'll leave it alone.
It is a cleaner, better record if you address, if you could bring it back and address it, but there are plenty of things that get tabled that don't make it back because whatever the triggering event hasn't happened, so.
Okay. Any other agenda issues to discuss? We now will move on to consent agenda. It contains only the minutes from the January 18th regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for Mr. Smith, and do we have a second?
My second?
Second for Mr. David. Any discussion? There are none. I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Just as a kind of a housekeeping issue, we now have these buttons to function. So if you, council members would use the buttons when they want to speak on a particular agenda item. Appreciate it, and we'll try to call you in the order that I see those light up, okay? Thank you. Discussion approval appropriation ordinances. This reporting period includes a few final 2021 expenses as well as first of year fees. Payments include $43,489 to Kansas MIT for 2021, 2022 work comp insurance as well as bonded capital projects amounting to $331,300. I understand that work comp insurance because of experience rating was reduced 20%. Is that correct?
Yes, the shout out to our employees for staying safe.
That's very good. Outstanding.
Helps with our.
More important than that, money is the fact that they didn't get injured. That's even better. So, great, thank you. Need discussion on the appropriations ordinance. Here none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. David. Mr. David.
I motion that we accept the appropriations ordinance, 2202.
Motion for Mr. David. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second for Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Here none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. On city requested appearances, I have Ms. Shelley Rich from the Medical Society of Cedric County. And she's here to talk about tobacco-free parks. So just as a comment, as a former smoker, and obviously you probably don't believe that, but 46 years ago I did quit smoking. I can attest to how hard it is to quit. Anything we can do to aid people and stop smoking and to reduce the occurrence of secondhand smoke without walking over their rights of citizens is always a good thing. So this is, will be an interesting concept.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you for, to the city council for letting me speak tonight. Thank you, Ty, for helping me coordinate this. So my goal today is to educate the council on the benefits towards moving towards tobacco-free parks. Like the mayor said, my name is Shelley Rich, and I am the Tobacco Control Coordinator and the facilitator of the Tobacco Free Wichita Coalition. So since 1970, the mission of the Tobacco Free Wichita Coalition has been to protect all residents of Wichita and Cedric County from the adverse effects of tobacco. So our name implies Wichita, but we do work with all of Cedric County, so we would be very happy to work with Bel Air. So I'm curious how many of you have heard of the Tobacco Free Wichita Coalition?
I did a few weeks ago.
You did, on January 8th, yes, I presented to the Cedric County Association of Cities. So this is all a review for the mayor. So the, I already mentioned the Tobacco Free Wichita Coalition. I also was, am curious if you knew that Cedric County has two chronic disease risk reduction grantees. So I am one of those full-time employees, and my coworker and I are working on five KDHE-approved work plans, and this is one of them. So that's how kind of we all connect, how this work is all connected. And from my introduction, and as it says on the agenda, I am an employee of the Medical Society of Cedric County because they hold the funds for the grant. So a little bit more information about tobacco-free parks. The National Recreation and Park Association has a position statement on tobacco consumption in parks, and they want to encourage all providers of park, recreation, and leisure services to maintain healthy, safe, and clean environments that are free of tobacco consumption and use, tobacco products, and the negative behaviors that may worsen public health. So this slide mentions some of the other additional benefits of tobacco-free parks such as exposure to secondhand smoke, litter, and the danger of fires. A little bit more information from the National Recreation and Park Association. A poll was conducted of over 1,000 Americans aged 18-plus asking whether they support prohibiting tobacco-free parks. And as you could see, nearly four in five Americans support this, which was 79%. Support is higher among college, among parents and college graduates. So kind of as I mentioned, the National Recreation and Park Association supports the elimination of tobacco products at public parks and recreation centers nationwide. A little bit about, a little more about why this is important. In 2018, the National Youth Survey, which is conducted by the CDC, showed that e-cigarette use among high school students increased 78%. One million teens began using e-cigarettes between the years of 2018 and 2019. And the U.S. Surgeon General has declared vaping a youth epidemic. So tobacco-free parks is just one area where we could prohibit the use of smoking e-cigarette products in the community. Benefits to Bel Air for adopting tobacco-free parks include creating a healthy space for children, families, and pets to be outside. It creates a healthier image for visitors. Hopefully will lead to more people attending events and utilizing the parks. Helps keeps the parks clean and safe. Reducing the risk of tobacco youth initiative due to the role modeling and the, just not seeing tobacco in the parks. And then, like the mayor said when he gave his introduction, it helps the residents who are, are working to quit smoking tobacco. As you can see by this slide, this is an emerging issue in Kansas. So we have 21 cities that have adopted an ordinance, and actually that should be 22. As I was preparing for today's presentation, I realized that Derby is left off of this list. So 22 ordinances and seven policies so far in Kansas. So I mentioned Derby. I want to explain briefly the approach that they took in this Cedric County community. Their approach was bureaucratic, and it was staff who recognized an emerging issue while they were cleaning up their e-cigarette ordinance. And so they wanted to be a progressive city, and so they worked on this tobacco-free parks ordinance. It is a partial ban. When they voted the ordinance in, they also said that they were going to allow smoking in designated areas associated with city property. But through talking to the staff about this ordinance since it's been adopted, they said that it's not used. So for example, they had a mayor's lighting, tree lighting ceremony. They put up a smoking, a specific smoking area, and it wasn't used. So it was passed as a partial ban, but they're thinking that they can move to a full ban. The other city that I want to highlight had an opposite approach. So the city of Cheney, this was led by Cash Young. He presented to city council and asked them to adopt the ordinance as part of his 4H citizenship project. He was 10 years old at the time that this was adopted. And they do have one exemption, as I noted on the slide. They did not include their golf course when they passed the ban just because it is a pay-to-use golf course instead of a free park open to everybody. But they acquired free signs from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to post at their parks, letting them know that it was tobacco-free. And I spoke to staff at both Cheney and Derby, and they are willing to help share any of these public records for any other community that wants to work on this in Cedric County. So as I wrap up with my last three slides, I'd just like you to consider what approach would work better in Bel Air? Would it be kind of a top-down as staff are working on ordinances? Or would it be better for it to be more of a citizen-led ask that the council adopt tobacco-free parks? I'd like to share some of the resources that Tobacco Free Wichita and the Chronic Disease Risk Reduction Grant can offer to Bel Air through this process. So obviously, because this is grant-funded, it would be free technical assistance. We have sample talking points, sample letters of support. We're able to promote and educate about tobacco-free parks at events. Obviously, meetings like this with city council. Help with community and youth engagement. We could go through a tobacco-free park strategy chart if that is something that you would be interested in. And then finally, we have an environmental scan kit that we could loan out to any organization that wants to raise awareness about this topic. And this kind of shows a little bit more about an environmental scan. So the kit includes flags, gloves, zip locks, and basic instructions on how to do an environmental scan. What you're seeing in this picture is Sleepy Hollow Park. This scan was conducted on May 11th of 2019. They stopped after one hour, and they had collected 1,000 pieces of cigarette trash. So it's a good educational awareness piece that you could do in a park to show what the current tobacco litter environmental scan is. We also have customizable social media education. So Tobacco Free Wichita did a seven-tip series this fall to educate about the importance of tobacco-free parks. We're able to share this, customize it with your city logo if that is something that you'd be interested in. And so this is my contact information. I have business cards if that would be helpful. Ty has my contact information. But that is the information that I wanted to present to you. I don't know if there's time for questions.
If anybody had, anyone have any questions for Ms. Rich?
How does this, the vaping, I know, slightly different. Does it generate the same amount of trash and other hazards?
So I'm learning a lot about vaping. The Tobacco Free Kansas Coalition had their annual meeting a couple of weeks ago, and one of the presentations was about the amount of trash that's generated from the vaping epidemic. And so they're trying to do a vaping recycling program. And I'm not a scientist by any means, but they're talking about just the danger. The nicotine in the vaping is a hazardous material, so it has to be disposed of properly. And so I know that that is one point about vaping. Did I answer your question, or were you kind of going in?
I know cigarette butts are bad because people throw them everywhere, and kids and pets and everything pick them up. And, but do we have the same type of problem with vaping products? Do they discard stuff all over the?
They're becoming more disposable products, and so we're finding more and more litter from the vaping.
Okay, I didn't know anything about that. That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation, and I'm sure we'll have some more discussion about this.
Okay, thank you.
We want to citizens' concerns. I have Jonathan Trembley. Trembley, I'm saying your name right? Thank you. Please come to the podium, state your name and address, and we give you three minutes to speak.
Cool. My name is John Trembley. I live at 5012 North Remington. That's right in your guys' backyard. Reason I wanted to talk today is a concern about the drainage program that's going on with the Pearson Phase Two. In this room, a couple of years ago when we got that all rezoned, another member of my HOA and I, who's not here tonight, but my neighbor Anthony is here to help express our concerns. It was agreed that we would not fight the rezoning as long as there was no access granted to those ponds. I would call drainage access. Right? Am I correct in that?
I'm not that familiar with it.
Okay, okay. But, so, one of the main reasons I know we bought that lot, and I know Anthony, who's my direct neighbor, bought his lot, is that awesome pond. We also have someone in the city, I don't know if it's the council, I think it's the zoning department, claiming that that's a public pond. So we would appreciate if you guys could get that straightened up. Excuse me, sorry. I have asked people to leave because it is a private pond, and I did have somebody like kind of argue back with me. And I'm super nice about it, you know, it's just like, I'm sorry, this is private property. We don't want people on it. But when it was being drained, I have no idea how many fish were lost over there. And I know that sounds ridiculous, but I love fishing in that pond. So, sorry. So I don't know what can be done about this, but A, I wanted you guys to hear that we're not happy. I would like to recommend that we do some sort of restocking of that pond. And my pond is seven feet down from where it normally is. If I had to sell my house right now, I'd lose tens of thousands of dollars. And I know that's a main concern of Anthony's as well. So I don't know what can be done, but I would like some consideration. Whether that be a credit on a water bill for everybody who's, has a view of that pond. And I am here just as a homeowner. I'm not representing our HOA in any way, shape, or form. Uh, yeah, I do have one other question. You might not be able to answer this. Somebody had to give them authority to do that, right? Somebody had to approve them going to do that?
The drainage, yeah.
The pumping out.
I'm sorry?
Both the pumping out of the water and installing that drainage.
I'm not familiar.
Should that have been done if that is a private pond?
I'm not familiar with the situation, so.
Yeah, I could, when you're ready, Mayor, I can answer a number of these questions.
Please do.
Yeah. Yes, so the first question is, is that pond owned by the HOA? And it is, according to the plat, it is owned by the HOA. And so therefore, as far as, it's not a public place. So it would be used for HOA members, and if the public does go there, it would be up to the HOA to enforce, you know, having them leave. The second piece of it is that it is a drainage area. So the city does have some ability to do, do work in drainage areas. So, and, and what, the reason that it was, was partially drained was to address some drainage that's being developed just north. And Greg Allison with MKEC is here. And we asked him to come and talk about what, what happened, why they did that, what's, what's going to be taking place in the future. The nice thing about MKEC is they actually did all the plating and storm drainage studies for Elk Creek. And then they're also doing all the drainage study and plating and engineering for the villas at Prestwick, which is just to the north.
Those are correct.
So Greg, if you wouldn't mind sharing what, what took place and why, and what's, what's happening?
Greg Allison with MKEC, and we're working for you and the developer on, on the villas at Prestwick. And we had a drainage report that we did during the plating, and we analyzed drainage and how to manage it. And in fact, we layered that in with previous strange reports for Elk Creek. And I think the original reports that were done when, when this, the development north of, I can't remember the name of the development that you guys did, but Central Park, yeah. So it's, it, the, the, the report we did with Prestwick was a layering of additional information that has been compounded since Central Park first started. And basically, it's a master plan, not only for the development, but also the drainage that, that goes through there. And as far as the drainage goes, we want to manage how the drainage runs off and when development occurs. The increased runoff that's caused by development is managed and slowed up, and that's what all these ponds are doing. All that to say, when we did Prestwick, there was a connection into that pond on the Elk Creek side, which yes, it is private property, but it's in a public drainage easement that was platted as part of the Elk Creek plat. So the public can drain into it. Now they can't use it, you know, outside of that express purpose, but, but. So we connected that, and then we bid that project, and the contractor in order to install the pipe that we needed to connect in there, pumped it out. And that was kind of his means and method to do it. You know, the, the pond will fill back up and be at its natural level. Nothing's been changed to alter the level of the pond or, or anything. So we would expect, hopefully if it snows and that melts off, that'll start the filling. But it, it will fill back up and be back to its normal condition. So apologize for the inconvenience and the struggle that, that it's caused, and I understand that. I live by a lake too, so I, I get the concern that when the water drops, what problems that creates for you. But it will fill back up, and it's part of the natural drainage channel through there. And be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Trembley?
So I hear it's an easement for drainage. Things can go out of it. Does that include pumping already existing water out to facilitate that?
As I'm understanding, Mr. Laster and MKEC, yes, because it's the public drainage area and the public easement. So, yeah, I think that would be an appropriate thing to do to keep from flooding, right?
Well, it, at this point, it's just being pumped down to install the pipe. And I will say, the pipe, if, if we didn't do that, the pipe would be at a higher elevation and if, and be above the water, which isn't necessarily an aesthetic item. Or it's not aesthetic to do that. So what we do in our design, we want the pipe buried so it outflows below the water and, and it doesn't kind of mess up the shoreline as far as visual and in maintenance and that, that kind of thing. So feel like in the long run, it's a better design to be able to do that. In the short run, it's caused this problem, which I think will alleviate itself fairly quickly.
So a new pipe has been put in?
The pipe has been put in, yeah.
It's been sold, okay, all right.
My problem is not with the pipe at all. My problem really is with the fact that they're draining into it. I see that as an access, but it's an easement, so that's its own thing. The way it was gone about, A, I called the zoning committee. They said they had no idea what it was about. And B, I know this cemetery, it's like, I get it, right? But I have really big fishing. I've taken care of it for years. I have no idea how many of them have. I know that sounds ridiculous, but it is very important to me.
Okay, so.
The main reason we spent half a million dollars on the lot and house. The main reason, but a big reason was access to that pond, and that's been.
And I understand your concern, but, but the bad news about that, I think, and I'll ask the engineers to clarify this, most of these ponds are just drainage ponds. They're not fishing. most of these ponds are just drainage ponds, they're not fishing ponds, they're not deep enough for fish. And you may end up with the fish kill there, and it'd be nobody's responsibility about that because it's not deep enough.
Oh sure, sure, if it naturally happens, but if this wasn't naturally occurring.
Okay, yeah, okay, I understand what you're saying. Do you have a question, sir? Could you, could you please come to the microphone and state your name and address?
My name is Anthony Al, I live in 5018 North Remington Street. My question is, first of all, you said that it will be restored, can you give us some idea of when it will be done? So that it restore to the original water level? And then the second is that, will that, would that be cause anything to our HOA, do we have to pay anything for that?
No, they're talking about like natural drainage fall, and it, the other ponds may overfill. So we're not gonna have to pay for the water to be refilled, it just be melt from snow. It will refill, I would imagine.
It should refill, I think there's actually even a natural spring that kind of flows down from the north, so I think it will continue to fill. But, but we do need the snow, we do need the rain, and once that's done, and it's fairly decent sized basin, so it ought to fill pretty quick, and I don't, I don't know that it's a one to two inch rain, and that thing ought to fill back up and be back. And I, I would say more than, the best thing that could have occurred was at least the contractor and we let the HOA know what was happening before it just happened, so my apologies for not having the contractor do that. And I think that could have alleviated.
It would be a great help, yeah.
Concerns, appreciate their bringing it to our attention and.
Just a curiosity, when was this work done?
It's just been in the last month.
Okay, because it's been a particularly dry couple of months. 2021 was not a dry year, we've had more than our normal average rainfall in Bel Air, but, but the last couple of months have been particularly dry, so.
We expect it to fill right back up and understand the issues with the fish. I'm not a fish expert, we don't design the ponds for fish, but we know fish get in them and are put in them, and generally, our seven to eight to nine foot deep ponds can sustain fish, so, I mean, we understand that.
But they're, they are drainage ponds, they're not fishing ponds.
Yeah, it's all perspective, from an engineer's perspective, it's drainage, but from a landowner, it's fishing, so.
I get it, okay, very good, alright, thank you very much, appreciate the discussion. Moving on, unless there's other citizens that would like to speak to the council? Okay, thank you, have a good evening. Councilmember reports, Mr. David, do you have a report for us?
No report.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I just want to make sure everybody realizes that this is Black History Month, go learn something new.
Okay, very good, thank you. Mr. Smith?
I have no report.
Thank you, alright. Time's up. Move on to mayor's report, so maybe you've heard, there's a nationwide blood shortage, so I encourage everyone who can to please donate blood. I did this on January 20th at Northeast Magnet High School. So supply is to, total supply in the United States is an average of one to two days, so that's a very short supply of blood. So if you can, sign up, you can do it online at Red Cross, I'm sorry, redcrossblood.org, or you can call 800-RED-CROSS, which is 800-733-2767. Our tree board could use a couple additional people, we currently have two openings for the tree board. If anyone is interested in joining, please complete a volunteer application found on the city website. And if you don't have access to the website, you can call City Hall at 744-2451. On February 4th at 11:30, Bel Air is hosting the K254 Corridor Development Association meeting, so that will be here, I believe in the community room, is that correct? Thank you. On January 26th, I attended the local government day in Topeka, so I met with Senator, Senate President Kai Masterson and Representative Patrick Penn. Both are interested in fixes to Senate Bill 13, that was the revenue neutral rate law, also known as RNR. I also learned that the League of Kansas Municipalities and the Americans for Prosperity have some interest in fixing the unfunded mandates of this law. They're not necessarily supporting a particular position, but they're interested in those fixes, so. So maybe there's some traction to get this issue fixed, that would be a good thing. I also had a good conversation with Senator, President Masterson about the K254 and our concerns with that highway. He shared that when he was young, he actually lived in Towanda, so he is very familiar with the issues of this road. I invited Senator Masterson and Representative Penn, as well as City Council, Wichita City Council Member Becky Tuttle, to join the K254 Corridor Development Association. They have expressed interest in this, but they have busy schedules, especially right now legislation is in session, so we'll see if that comes together. We also heard from Attorney General Schmidt about the opioid settlement, and that this is about, this means about $40,000 for Bel Air in total, and it'll be just piecemeal out as they settle different claims and such. Right now, they only have one $10 million claim that they've settled, and it's just gonna be a little bit of money, because total pool, they're looking at about 190 million, so that will be, their estimate's about, per capita is about $5, okay. On January 27th, I attended Chisholm Creek Utility Authority Meeting here at Bel Air City Hall, right here in this council room. So a few highlights, we reviewed the proposed pay scale due to how this is being utilized, it was adopted as advisory. The CCU A has only five employees. We did not review the maintenance agreement, we not renew, I miswrote, mistyped that, the maintenance agreement with MicroCom for the computer system that manages this facility, that's called the SCADA. A five-year review shows that they're paying a lot more money for maintenance service than we would have paid out a pocket to fix stuff. So the big risk is lightning strikes, and I did ask that we review our insurance agent with lightning strikes to make certain that we have coverage for such, if it's significant damage. And we are tabled issues on facility operations audit and a flow meter calibration plan, as there's outstanding issues on both of these. I have been working with Jake Boukoye on the calibration plan by getting him in touch with people I know that build flow meters and calibrate flow meters. And lastly, we renewed our agreement with Perch Security for cybersecurity for the computer network. Now I'll ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On your agenda today, you'll be considering an agreement with Cedric County to receive some funds to fix for their share of Woodlawn. This agreement will begin the process of what will become an annexation, so just wanted to make clear that you're approving the agreement today to accept the funds, and then the next step, in the next 90 days, we'll have to annex that side of the roadway as a separate action. Wanted to also update you on a couple of bills that may be of interest. We've seen the proposed House map, and it's actually moving, our council had written a letter to the, to our House members requesting that we be moved into one district. So far, the House map seems to have all of Cedric County in one district, so that could be nice, so.
That's hot, okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very different map, but it, it does have the county, this part of the, this region of the state in one district. So we'll see as that moves through, if the governor will sign it. Another piece of legislation is related to open records. A lot of the records that we handle in Bel Air are just, you know, questions of, hey, does this record exist? I'm wanting to know this, and then Melissa spends a lot of time trying to find the record, trying to see if that record exists before actually moving on to the next step. This piece of legislation would prevent the city and other cities from being able to implement fees for that time investigating if a record exists. So the league is, has taken a position of supporting us through it, we'll watch it and see what happens. The grocery tax bill that the council had prioritized as one of their five legislative priorities is moving through committee hearings, it still doesn't have any requirement that the local tax be removed. However, the league has said that there are, there may be some attempts to remove the local tax as well in committee, that seems to be the buzz. So we're watching that, and we're prepared to write a letter opposing any removal of the local share of the tax. Autonomous vehicles, this, this bill would possibly implicate home rule, because autonomous vehicles would be allowed statewide, and no city would be able to enact ordinances to prevent it. Fireworks, this bill right now, fireworks season in Bel Air goes from June through the 4th of July. This bill would basically allow year-round sales, fireworks sales. However, we would be, we would have an ability to restrict that bill locally as it's written now. So those are just some interesting bills that are moving through that do have impact on the city.
Thank you, there was some discussion at the local government day about the tax, the sales tax thing, and they were pretty adamant that there was nothing in those bills right now that would take away cities, the sales tax that we gain from the formula with Cedric County. But they did use the same caveat that it's still built, so it can change, but thank you for the report. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, well, the hot topic of the day is the winter storm that we're supposed to be getting. And so I just want to let you and our citizens know that we have crews, we'll be starting at 10:00 PM tonight, they're watching the weather right now. We'll be running 24-hour shifts until it's over if it does come. We've got four trucks equipped with spreaders and snowplows, and they're ready, we've got plenty of salt and sand. And it's important for citizens to know that we have snow routes, and as it starts to pile up, those will be where they'll spend their time. So we won't get all the streets cleared, especially cul-de-sacs, they will be concentrating on the snow routes. And if anybody wants to see what those are, they're on our website, we listed them today. So the main key, and the snow routes are, you know, to get people to the main roads to get to work and school, of course, schools are closed. But, but anyway, the key will be to keep those open for everybody, and we'll hope it's just a dusting.
Well, some do, some don't.
Yeah, that's right.
We want to fill that pond back.
Okay, well, thank you, appreciate that. Moving on to ordinance resolutions and final actions, so the first item here is confirming a temporary appointment of Paul Matzik to the Bel Air Planning Commission. So the planning commission consists of seven members, two of which must live outside city limits within four miles of the city limits, but not in another city. For Bel Air, that's a pretty narrow area from which to find members for the planning commission. Dee Roth is such one member, and she have, and we have a second vacant seat. So Paul Matzik is friends with Dee Roth's and is interested in serving on the commission. I and James Smith, the planning commission chairman, have spoken with Paul. This appointment is temporary to get the term on a June recycle, renewal recycle, cycle, so that the, so we'll have all the planning commission members come up due at the same time, and that makes it a little more consistent for training and such things, so. Any questions for myself or staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Justin.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the temporary appointment of Paul Matzik to the Bel Air Planning Commission through June 2022.
Second?
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign, motion carries three to zero. We have a change order from Pearson's Construction for the Villas at Prestwick. The earthwork for Phase Two of Villas at Prestwick is nearly completed, leaving a significant amount of soil left over. The contractor added some of the additional soil to the berm, but there's still a large amount remaining. So consensus of the engineering and developer is to have the leftover soil removed. Since this work is beyond the original scope of the project, a change order has been submitted. City engineer Anne Stevens is here to explain the situation, answering questions, Ms. Stevens.
So as the mayor said, we do have quite a bit of work of dirt left over. When any engineer looks at a piece of ground, unless they have specific direction from the developer, they try and do the best they can to balance the dirt, that where the cut equals the fill, and there's no leftover dirt. If there's a pond, they take that, all the dirt coming out of the pond into account to try and balance the site. The, we're not entirely sure exactly what happened on this site, but we did have quite a bit of dirt left over. After talking with the developer, the developer would like the dirt hauled away, and that's kind of where we're at, where we've got the change order. We did have several questions from council members come in today, asking various questions, well, can we keep the dirt? Can we put the dirt somewhere else? Can we have it for citizens to take? Not really, it's not our dirt, it's the developer's dirt, it's the developer owns the site, we don't really have a place to put it at this point. There are certainly other contractors that may need dirt, but at this time, time is somewhat of the essence, and we need to get the dirt moved, which is kind of where we're at today. Mr. Allison with MKEC could certainly answer other questions if you have specific ones regarding the developer's interest or how, how the dirt pile came to be, but it is fairly significant.
I guess my first, I have a question. I don't understand the financials on this. Who is paying for this? Is it part of something that we're going to issue a bond on that's paid off by specials? Is the developer paying it outright? Is the city supposed to pay for this?
Number one, so, so the city will pay the initial outlay of this, and then that will go into the entire project cost, we'll get, which will get bonded and assessed to, back to the developer as special assessments. So if he chooses to sell any of those lots, then the special assessments will go along with the lot. So any future property owners will be on the hook for the, for a small portion of this, or representative, representative portion of this change order.
Okay, and right now his plans are to maintain, keep those lots, right?
I believe so.
Okay, well, it's his money, I guess I don't care how he spends it then.
And that's, I mean, my, my job is not to say, yes, you can, or no, you can't, it is, is this reasonable? And MKEC has reviewed the change order request as well and found that the, the prices are reasonable for the amount of work that is being required.
Does seem like a lot of dirt for 24,000.
So my only concern with this, and I'm not saying don't do this, but I'm just thinking, if contractors or engineering firms know of contractors who need dirt and can use dirt, maybe it would be wise to make that offer so that they can, they can implement that. I know that's, sometimes a needle in a haystack to find, okay, but if we can do that, I just think it makes a better community, a better, a better use of resources if we can do those things, so, okay, anyway.
I think the issue is we're going to get rid of it in a hurry, and I ask about putting it on the lot north of City Hall here, spreading it six inches deep or whatever to just get it moved over there and get that lot built up a little bit, and I'm told that because our engineers try to keep all the quantity of dirt from moving out, we don't want to do that.
And there would be costs associated with that, which would probably be fairly similar to what is in place in front of you tonight.
Okay, and we've, we've had stockpile issues before, I realize, somebody reminded me of that too.
And my caution on stockpiling is, I do, I understand in some of the history of lot sales that we lost a significant business coming into Bel Air because of pounds, mounds of dirt. Because the particular business, they happen to be Japanese, and their culture, piles of dirt mean there's a problem someplace. And so they said we will go, they went elsewhere, and they did, they stayed in the area, but they went to another city. And that was the big, that was the big deal, so I'm not in favor of pile it dirt, just to pile it dirt. So I'm not in favor of pile it dirt, just to pile it dirt. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
So is the reason that you try to balance the dirt in an area for drainage purposes?
That's part of it, but it's more so you don't have the expense of either bringing in dirt or hauling off dirt. That we, we always try to get water to run downhill and the balance is more of the expense of either hauling in or bringing, or taking, hauling in or hauling out.
Okay. I was just wondering if, you know, because there's this much dirt left over and that's a surprise, do we have any concerns that something wasn't graded or constructed properly that's going to cause drainage issues in the area?
MKEC has been out on site throughout the entire construction and they've been checking it. So I, I do not have concerns. I, I trust that they're doing their job and making sure. They, they work very closely with this developer, so they don't want to get anything wrong either. They want that repeat business.
Mr. David?
I just wondered if you knew offhand how many lots this would be spread over, the cost would be spread over how many lots?
Do you know, I, I don't know offhand how many lots there are.
We counted that before and it's like 30 or 40, wasn't it?
Fifteen lots, but there are fifteen private lots.
And I believe the developer is, is retaining ownership of these and ready them. He's, he's, I don't think he's planning to sell these, at least not any time in the near future.
Three or four dollars per lot, extra expense.
Right.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve proposed change order number one for Pearson Construction in the approximate amount of $24,391 for the Villas at Prestwick Phase Two grading, drainage and paving improvements and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second. A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign. Hear three ayes?
Yes, you did. I'm a little slow because my throat's froggy.
That's fine. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item C, professional services at Oliver Lift, for Oliver Lift Station and associated piping. So the developers for Homestead and Chapel Landing Three are ready to move forward with sewer improvements. Due to topographical and, and gravity feed sewer line alone is not going to be sufficient to meet KDHE standards. A sewer lift station will need to be installed in this area near Oliver at 53rd. There are, are two options for locations and sizes of lift stations. Our city engineer Anne Stevens is here to explain these options and answer questions. Ms. Stevens?
So when Homestead was initially platted, I did review a preliminary layout for both water and sanitary sewer. And the sanitary sewer looked like it would work, but when I got the final plans, I noticed that going through the prior, or the piece of property that's in Sedgwick County, kind of the Bel Air surrounds, it was too long of a stretch for us to be able to clean out. And at a slightly less than minimal percent grade from KDHNE, we needed to clean it out a little bit more frequently, but our machine doesn't reach that long of a distance. So that turned out to be a no-go, which the developers said, oh gosh, what do I do now? So we've been trying to work with them and the lift station became pretty much the option that is available. So with that, and in looking towards the future, we've got two options. We can either do a localized lift station approach that would just serve the Homestead development and the Chapel Landing development. And if you have your staff report in front of you, it would be the, kind of the blue area that is at 53rd and Oliver, the hard corner, and then the red area adjacent to it. So it's a fairly small area. The area to the south Prairie Preserve, that is going to be served by a private pressurized pump system. So each house is going to have their own small lift station that is going to be completely private. The city's not going to maintain it. The city's not going to have anything to do with it. They're going to take care of it. And then the developments to the east of that county parcel is already currently served with sewer. So it's just this, this small corner in the southeast quadrant of 53rd and Oliver. If we look at, with an eye towards future development, we could bring in quite a bit of the area to the north, which is what the exhibits are showing. It doesn't quite show the area being served by the lift station south of 53rd, but this is all to the north. Brent Wooten is here with Baughman Company. He actually talked to the property owners up here. Some of them are interested in potentially developing others, not really at this time, but they're, they're amenable to easements going through. And we actually do have some easements already in that area, so we would not have to purchase easements for the entire, the pump station as well as the associated force main or gravity pipe that would need to serve the lift station. So there's two options before council. And as I said, Mr. Wooten is here. If you have questions for him, he can speak more towards the developers' interest. He is working with both the Homestead developer as well as the Chapel Landing developer. I did give you information as far as the approximate maintenance costs, and those are from our current lift stations to give you an idea of what future lift stations would, would cost. From staff perspective, it's always nicer to have one instead of the two, and that just adds that much more maintenance costs for us. But I know they are very interested, Homestead in particular, of getting online sooner rather than later. And both myself and Keith, we're not really letting them move too much further ahead until we have this lift station at least started. It's, it's going to take a while to get it fully online. I know Homestead is interested in getting occupancy the end of 2022, first of 2023. So it is kind of a time is of the essence thing. The size of the lift station is not going to determine one way or the other. It's going to be able to, we'll be able to construct it in the same amount of time and get them online about the same amount of time. It's just waiting for the parts that's going to be kind of the slower part of it. But before you tonight, number one is that decision, whether you want to go with a regional lift station or the localized lift station. And then following that, there's a contract with Baughman Company for the actual design. Instead of going out and looking at several engineering companies, we did ask Baughman to provide a quote for us because they are working with the two developments and they understand time is of the essence. So they're going to be pushing this forward and making this a top priority.
So I, are these maps, are they north at the top?
So north is at the top.
Okay. So help me orientate, where, where are we on this? I'm, I'm just a little lost.
Does this have a pointer tie?
So you're 53rd and Oliver.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay. So north is obviously at the top, 50, or this is Oliver, and then 53rd's at the bottom. So this is not labeled quite correct. This side, the left side is the regional option, and this would be the location of the lift station. So you're about a quarter mile north of 53rd on Oliver. And then down here in the corner, this would be the location of the localized lift station option. So this would be a proposed plat of the development that, from the one landowner to the north.
So why does it say Homestead only?
It's, it was transposed.
Oh.
It was, the, the labeling on these two is not correct. And so that's.
We're all north of 53rd.
That's why it's different.
Everything here is.
Everything north is, here is north of 53rd. The, the exhibits are a little confusing, but it was intent to show, intended to show the location of the lift station. So the Homestead and Chapel Landing, this one with the lift station appropriately located probably would have been better served if we had a picture more to the south so you could actually see the area. And I apologize for that, but it's, unfortunately, it's what we've got to deal with tonight.
Does it matter what you put up there? We still have questions.
That's, that's fine.
This is fine. I appreciate that explanation. So the other thing, and I know it's a little bit off topic, but not quite. You said this Prairie Preserve.
Yes.
Is using a different system. They're not going to be tied into our sewer system at all, or what are they doing?
They are. They've got individual pump stations there. It's a low-pressure sanitary sewer system. So each individual house, and these are like, I think, two to five acre lots, if I remember correctly. So it's very few lots spread over a large area. They're each going to have like an individual pump station. It's a grinder pump assembly, so it'll grind up whatever comes out of the house and send it through a force main to dump into a city manhole. So.
And that will end up in this, in this lift station?
No, it will not. It will actually end up in a manhole that is in the Park Vista neighborhood, I believe. That is currently in design, so I don't have specifics, but the intent was for it to discharge into a city manhole where it can gravity to one of our lift stations.
Who's required, whose responsibility will it be to maintain the, all these individual pumps?
That'll be the HOA's responsibility.
HOA, okay. All right. I, I know it's slightly off topic, but it's kind of like, this is part of this whole thing, I think.
Yes. And it's, it's kind of one of those, it's not a new technology. I used it back in Nebraska when I was a consulting engineer. It's been around for a while, but it hasn't been used around this area a lot. And KDHE recently heard different presentations on it and has approved it for you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Well, I, I've got more questions about this Prairie Preserve. We're not actively building that right now, right?
Kind of, sort of, not really.
Okay. So that, so this really bothers me that we're assuming they're going to have a certain type of sewage system when there's nothing being constructed. And that a year from now, the guy doesn't decide to sell the whole piece of property off and we end up getting a request to service it with sewer.
It is on the face of the plat that they will be served by this, it's, the technical name is an E1 pump station. That's the brand. But they, it's on the face of the plat that it will be served by a private sanitary sewer system and it will, and the home, the HOA and homeowners association will take that up.
But we can replant, right?
Correct. If something would change in the future, and it's basically virgin ground, other than the grading that has been done, then that new owner would need to figure out how to serve that, that piece of ground. And I'm not sure, Brent, do you know if our localized lift station would be able to serve that Prairie Preserve?
It's possible. We can have a manhole down there.
So it is, it is likely.
And you said this is in the plat, but we haven't approved the plat yet for that area.
I cannot recall. I believe that plat was approved, that final plat was approved by planning commission. Jackie, do you recall where we are with that?
The Prairie Preserve was approved. I think the, I can't remember if it was preliminary or final. I can look at that.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't think it's come to council yet.
Okay.
I thought that because I haven't seen it for signature, so.
Okay. So it may not have come through for final approval yet.
Okay.
But I know, I know it's been talked to, through a planning commission, I believe, twice. So we actually may be due to get that to you on the 15th or whatever the next meeting date is.
That's all fine, but I don't want to be dependent on it because things can change until we actually build something.
That's true.
And really, until you build something, you're, you, you have opportunities.
But we're talking about a regional lift station, and if it's regional, does it need to be big enough to serve Prairie Preserve if they do something different? It will be.
Thank you. Mr. David?
I've still got a question here.
I'm sorry?
So this.
Good job.
Item C, the only thing we're being asked to approve on this is engineering services, not actually building anything.
That is correct. You need to approve a concept, whether you want to go with a regional or with the localized lift station, because that is, that does change the amount of engineering that is required.
Okay. And so how much does it change the total price of the project if we go with the regional versus the localized?
So if you go with the localized lift station, it's about $900,000. And if you go with the regional lift station, it's about 1.7 million. So it's not quite double.
And that extra 700,000 would be on the city of Bel Air until somebody comes in and starts doing more development?
That is correct.
But there's nobody coming in to do more development because we've got already planned everything that's going to happen, right?
There's, there, there would be, it would open up this area to the north for development is, is what it would do. It would also stay, save us a second lift station in the future. And at this point, the, the developers of Homestead and Chapel Landing are willing to pay for half of that lift station when they're not even a quarter of the entire, of what the entire cost would be.
Pay for half of the, of what?
Of the regional lift station.
Of the 1.7?
I guess.
Please push it up and to the microphone.
Mayor and city councilwoman Brent, Brent Wooten, Baughman Company. Want to point one other thing here that's added on here to this presentation. So this is eighty acres right here. Some of it's developed, right now there's a couple of homesites on there. Valverde, we're working with, owns all of that plus this, this down here. But the thing that's important is you've got a whole nother eighty acres over here to rent it, over here east of this, same size as this that's undeveloped presently. And that, this home station now gives you the ability to develop that eighty, eighty plus all of this area. So that's another 160, 180 homes over here. You've got 60, 60 homes potentially plus all the commercial down there. So it opens up a big, big area that's the last region that could be added into the city for development in the future. Otherwise, it's stranded.
Okay. We have kind of a strange border along there. Is that actually in Bel Air that whole quarter?
Yes. This whole quarter is the last part of Bel Air.
Okay. Because I know somewhere there, drop back down to be Kechai and.
Kechai.
Okay, I think I'm done.
Mr. David?
That was my question. Just got to answer.
Oh.
Where, where was the boundary?
Mr. Mayor, Prairie Preserve, Prairie Preserve has not come before council yet. So it should be coming soon.
Yeah. I knew it. I hadn't seen it yet. So, okay. Very good. Thank you. Any more discussion? So you have two options before you, a smaller lift station that just serves these two developments or a larger lift station that will serve the area.
Do we have the borrowing power to pay for the regional station? Is that something we need to ask Ted or do we already know the answer?
So yeah, we've stat, we've looked at that. And as Anne said, the, the, these two parcels were willing to pay for the cost of the, the, the smaller lift station. And so they would pay that portion towards the regional. And then for the city to pick up, if we bonded that for 20 years, we're looking at 50,000 a year that would come out of the sewer fund to cover that, that portion. And then as, as Mr. Wooten said, when, when someone came to develop those areas, we would create a benefit district and they would have to pay their portion of that regional.
So let me clarify, the two companies we're talking with now would pay the whole cost for that piece, the whole, I know that's kind of throws it off in there, but they would go ahead and pay their portion that they're willing to pay upfront? Or do they want to bond all that too?
No, they'll bond it and it'll be part of their sewer special assessment. So we'll bond the whole 1.7 million. But we know that because of the special assessments, we're going to receive, how much was the smaller station?
It was about 900,000.
About 900,000.
Okay. Anytime we bond something, I'm just worried that something happens, that we don't get the bonds paid.
It can happen.
And, and I was hoping what you had said, what I heard was that they were going to go ahead and pay some of it now and.
No.
Okay. Why don't be sure on that?
I can tell you that the Homestead development has, we have received phone call after phone call after phone call pretty much since day one. When is this coming? When is this coming? When is this coming? So I know it's a very much needed and very much anticipated project.
We've been looking at that for four years, right?
You know, thereabout.
Yeah. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. One question on the special assessments. I know Homestead has told us that they've either applied or intend to apply for tax-exempt status. Does that apply to special assessments? Will the city end up paying for that?
No.
Okay.
It's only property tax.
Well, I have no burning, uh, feel one way or the other. I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards the regional myself, but I, I would be interested in hearing what the council thinks on this.
Well, I, I already said that. I'm leaning towards the regional too. I just want to make sure I know what risk we're taking when we do it.
For which development? The north?
We've got a year to get it in.
As far as the lift station goes, but as far as the development?
Both developments.
Okay. And then the one to the north as well?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. The, the north is hypothetical. This is a developer. Two to four years out probably, but both of these themselves.
Okay, but the people up north, we can go ahead and assess for the lift station?
No, what?
Not until they build.
Right. Um, when they, when they're ready to, um, attach to our sewer system, that's when we can, um, assess them for that.
And Ted and I have talked with Kevin Cowan already, and he will assist us in writing the bond documents. So we can work all of this in to those documents that the benefit fee, the area that's benefited, those that will pay after, those that we'll pay now.
So a problem we've had in the past, and I have a couple of council members have questions as well. The problem we've had in the past is that, and I know we don't own this property, the city does not own this property. It's owned by private companies or individuals, but property doesn't sell well when there are assessments sitting out there, I guess, special assessments. Uh, is that going to impact the developers of these future developments? Or they are aware of this whole activity and they say, yeah, we understand that that will happen when we do this, but that's inevitable. It's always going to happen when you do this.
There will be no assessments until they choose to sign on.
Right.
So.
I know.
Right.
But are they aware that, of this, this activity?
I, I think, um, to be honest, we've, since, since I've been here, we've had a number of developers come and want to develop that. And we said, when there's no sewer, they move on. So I think we'll actually see the opposite is when someone comes to, um, Baughman or the city and says, hey, we want to put a development in here, and we can say their sewer already there. Um, because we, we, you may remember, we just went through that with the lift station at Web Road, just north of 53rd. And that's why all those properties sold is because we could tell them that they have sewer now. So I think, I think it's a benefit.
I, 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 I see that. That's good. Mr. David?
That was the sales pitch I was missing with, with developer pay more and how mu, how much more attractive is that? And you're saying it's very attractive. Because, but in the meantime, we have to hold the cost for it. It's a bit of a gamble for Bel Air.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, well, I, the way that I'm thinking about it is that it's inevitable that there's going to need to be lift stations that serve that area at some point. Um, and so it'd probably be pretty short sighted to take the more localized approach here. The other thing that I'm thinking about is that lift stations aren't necessarily a desirable thing. Nobody necessarily wants additional lift stations, especially if it's near their house or in their backyard. And if we take a lot of localized approaches, we have more people that have that lift station right in their backyard, which I think tends to create more unusable space around them. Cause nobody wants their house, you know, two feet from the lift station. Um, and so the, the, this approach, you know, just helps from a, an aesthetics and a property desirability perspective as well, and kind of reducing the number of lift stations overall that citizens are going to have to deal with. And then from a staff perspective, less that we have to maintain and pay for in the future. So I'm also in favor of the regional approach.
Mr. David, did you have something more you wanted to ask?
So we, we have, we have no idea how much this is going to cost us. We have to buy this, this area, right? That's one more unknown we have.
Baughman has estimated that this, that the regional lift station will cost about 1.7 million dollars.
And includes.
That includes the engineering, that includes the design, and I believe it also. It, they, they put, they estimate the cost for construction and then usually add 25 to 30% to that, which covers the incidentals, the property, the engineering, et cetera.
I thought I saw in the tabulation, it was 30,000 allotted for the property. I thought I saw that.
That could be.
I thought there was $30,000 allotted in the tab for, uh, purchase, purchase of the property for the lift station.
Yes, uh, yes. We're going to need to side about a 50 by 50 up in that region out there someplace, plus some outside regions. And so we're allocating 25 and 30,000 for, for that acquisition. That's included.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Who will we acquire that property from? Is it one, from one of the developers?
It's, yeah, it's neither one of these developers. It's a third.
Okay. Okay. And then the estimate numbers that are presented, uh, are those estimates based on today's inflated prices of everything or a year ago's more reasonable prices? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve an agreement for professional services with Baughman Company for the Oliver Lift Station and the amount of 156,500 for the Oliver Lift Station and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents pending city attorney review and approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Welsh to, uh, for 156,500 for the Oliver Lift Station. Any additional discussion or questions?
Should we mention that that's for the regional lift station instead of 156,000?
We could say both.
I, I do think that that would be helpful in this motion.
Yeah.
I amend my motion.
For the regional. Okay. And Mr. Welsh, I assume you.
Yes, I'll second my, second the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? There are none. A call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Item D, so this is, uh, 47th Street reconstruction, which is, uh, this was planned to be done in, uh, 2021. City staff worked with Garber to develop a construction plan and bid tab. Three bids were received with different options. Uh, funds were encumbered from the 2021 to pay for this improvement. So Stevens is here to explain the project and options as well as answer questions. So one question that popped up to me as I was reading through this afternoon, I'm sorry, I didn't get to ask this earlier. But that 100 feet east of the spillway, uh, there's a property, there's a house there.
That is correct.
So typically we don't pave residential streets, uh, that, that, those are paid for by the property owners.
Not quite.
So I wondered how, how you wanted to help us understand that.
Sure. Um, and the reason I say not quite is because it's already paved. It has paved that additional 100 feet. So that, that property owner had already paid his special assessments to put the pavement in initially. So it, it has already been paid for. So it is, it is treated the same way as the rest of 47th Street. Those property owners paid their special assessments when the lot was developed, or when the lot was built. And when they bought the house, they paid those specials. So we are coming in as a city to perform maintenance on the street, even though it is a reconstruction.
I didn't think it was paved in that section.
Yes, it is.
The corner of Hillcrest and.
Not, it's not, we're not going all the way to the intersection. We're just going up the 100 feet. Uh, we're just replacing that pavement.
Okay.
That already exists because it, like the rest of 47th is not.
I thought you were going clear to the corner of Hillcrest.
No.
So it's from the spillway east to the edge of that development?
Yes.
Okay.
So it, it just, it basically extends from that concrete spillway to the edge of the existing paving. We're not going further than that.
Thank you for the clarification. I didn't.
Yeah.
Understand it that way. When I was looking through those maps, I thought, this doesn't look right. Okay.
No problem.
Well, for that little add-on, I've been happy to do it. Went all the way to Hillcrest.
Yeah, that, that would be a very good price. Um, so for, for the viewers at home and just kind of also to clarify for council, the, the intent of this was to give council options on which, on what way they wanted to pursue. Base bid and alternate one are exactly the same with the exception of the concrete versus the asphalt. Alternate two and three do add on that additional piece of pavement that is existing on the east side of the concrete spillway. There is some area of that concrete spillway that is in very poor condition. So this project will be replacing that as well, but we're not replacing the entire spillway. So that is where we are. Um, the bids came in and there was a, between the base bid, there was a 24% difference between concrete and asphalt. And the alternate two slash three, there was a 27 and a half percent difference between the concrete and the asphalt. Kansas paving was the low in both concrete alternates. And Pearson Construction was the low in both asphalt alternates. Uh, we have worked with both contractors quite a bit. Um, Kansas paving has done a considerable amount. They did Baton Street. They have done a lot of the Rock Spring projects. They did Central Park Third up here. I know there's other ones that I'm not naming. Pearson Construction is currently working with us on Wood Lawn as well as, um, the Villas at Prestwick, which is back there. So both reputable contractors, I'd be happy with either of them. And it's kind of staff's perspective. Because it is a fairly high traveled road, we would like to see concrete, but that is up to the council. Um, as far as adding that additional 100 feet, it's always nice to get the additional piece upgraded. I do talk to that property owner, you know, usually once or twice a year, and he gets concerned because the gravel likes to migrate up onto his portion of the paving, which there's not a whole lot you can do and you're, you've got trucks and traffic and everything going back and forth. And I know he's concerned about the grading operations, but it's, you can't really stop, start or stop just right at that edge because then you're going to dig a hole where that is. So it's, it's always a challenge to, when you're grading gravel roads to match into pavement, but we do the best that we can and.
This road is currently, uh, asphalt.
That is correct.
And the re, the area is all asphalt except for that spillway, which is cement.
That is correct. And we did go through and put a slurry seal on the majority of the streets in this area. But we did skip 47th Street when we were doing that slurry because we knew there was a project coming. And then some of these pictures, particularly on the left, you see a lot of what we call alligator cracking. And over time, those cracks just grow with the freeze thaw of the moisture. And those kind of chunked out areas will actually pop out of the pavement and cause potholes. So it is, it is definitely important to get this treated and replaced as sooner rather than later.
I know some property owners would like us to take a clear to Wood Lawn, but right now that's like.
That is very true. That would cost the city quite a bit more with engineering and drainage design.
Okay. Well, this, from the, the economics, I think when we were, listened to the, uh, presentation on cement versus asphalt, this meets that 25% threshold where the, the asphalt is actually a better, a better bargain. I understand you're, you're looking at durability and you're thinking that the durability is in there, but, um, you know, Wood Lawn is being built in asphalt as well. So, yeah, we're going to have those issues and that's going to continue. But asphalt can, can have good durability if it's maintained. I realize some of these roads haven't been maintained and that's, that's really the issue that we have here. But, uh, so anyway. I think everybody knows my preference is always for asphalt and, uh, but, you know, you're the council, you make the decision. Oh, I'm sorry.
Wake up.
I gotta wake up. Okay. So I don't know which one went on first, so I'll go with Mr. David.
But back to the earlier discussion about all the way to Wood Lawn, is there an economy of scale here? It sounds like we discussed that before, but I wasn't part of that discussion, but is there an economy of scale to, to go on further?
There would be, but not at this time because it does need to be engineered. We would need to take the time to go through and grab the existing grades and do a whole, a centerline design through there so it could come through and be, and be paved appropriately. And if the city wanted to add drainage improvements, curbing, gutter, then that would be, that would significantly bump up the cost because I know there are, there's, there's several drainage issues in there that need to be addressed at some point. And it's not, and it's unfortunately not an option at this time.
Just, just for Mr. David's, uh, because he's new on the council, he's probably not aware of all the work that you've already done on drainage for all of our dirt roads and considered, and you're, you're working on a project right now at some point, uh, where we're looking at paving and then it's, and we don't know, we haven't decided what we're going to do yet. But there is a, uh, a project right now looking at paving all the dirt roads, just to see what that cost would look like. And we don't have the numbers yet, so.
We just didn't want that project to come in, you know, a year from now and then push it even further.
Yeah, I, I understand that. There's a, there is an issue there about who pays for it, okay? So that's, uh, as I was alluding to earlier about property owners pay for paving of the residential streets. And that's traditionally what we've done in the city. And I, I see no reason that we would change that. There's, that'd be some extenuating circumstances that I, I can't think of right now that would, would off, would, would justify that. Okay. Does that help you understand where we are?
Right, right. And I was, um, part of that discussion. It's just, um, I didn't know how far along that was, if it would make sense to hold off on this one, wait till that one was a little further along. And, and yes, assess who was paying for what. But it sounds like there's too much drainage and engineering work to, that goes into that yet. To hold this one off.
Yeah, you'd probably be about a year out, six months to a year by the time you got the design done for the rest of it. And then there's, comes down to the assessing and the paying for the project. And that's whether the citizens adjacent to that road want to pay for it or not. There's, that's another question.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I had two questions. One was because, uh, this, this, uh, pavement will end right at the gravel and will still be, uh, maintaining the gravel with grading. Does one of the, the concrete versus asphalt options, I can imagine the grader kind of arriving at the edge and chipping away at the freshly paved road or, uh, you know, going the opposite way and scooping out the freshly paved road. Is either option less likely to be damaged during grading operations? Is there an advantage there?
The concrete is a harder product, is probably less likely to be damaged, but you're still going to see some damage. You, you, you may still see some damage. I'm not going to say will, um, because I do try and avoid it as much as possible. But what I always like to do with, regardless with asphalt or concrete, is put basically a concrete or a header on the end. So you have a nice clean edge and then you have just a, the end of the truck load, whether it's concrete or asphalt kind of spilled on the end. So there's a little bit of a transition surface. And that does help protect the edge.
And then I guess the second question I had was on that, you know, expected life difference that, we, we did have that presentation. It's been a couple of years ago where we had that analysis on kind of what cost would, you know, more than justify the use of concrete versus asphalt. I was remembering a different number from 25, than 25%. Do you recall what that number was?
I do not. I know it was in the neighborhood of 25 to 30, but I cannot specifically recall which one.
I had 30 to 35 in my mind, but I, I, I can't remember. And this is right there in that neighborhood.
Just because you're, you're biased there.
May, maybe. It's possible. I, I don't know. I don't know that I have a, a personal preference one way or the other. I think asphalt rides smoother, but concrete looks nicer. Uh, so, uh, the, my main, my main focus is the economics and, you know, which one's the better value for, for the taxpayers there.
Just a quick question. He talked, you were talking about that, that apron or something. Is that something that would be a slope down from the street that would, that the gravel would actually go over a little bit?
Yes.
The idea? Okay. Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I had to understand that. Mr. Welch.
I want to know, you were referring to Kansas paving doing Baton. How does this bid compare per yard of concrete to the Baton project?
I have not looked at that, so.
No clue?
Cannot answer it.
Okay, all right. Then my last comment is we already budgeted last year more than enough money to pay for alternate two. And I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to accept the bid from Kansas paving for alternate two in the amount of $223,774 for 47th Street reconstruction authorized the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second that.
Most of my Mr. Welch and second by Mr. Smith to accept Kansas pavement under alternate two for repaving at 47th Street. Any additional discussion? Okay, now I'll call for Mr. Welch or David, I'm sorry.
I guess I'm still not sold on without that number, why we wanted to go to the way through asphalt with all the cars.
We expect concrete to have approximately a 50-year life cycle and asphalt about 30 years, is that correct? So we get a lot longer life cycle out of the road. I wouldn't say it was any rougher than asphalt when I drive on it. You'll hear some clicks when you go across the expansion joints, but I don't think it really is rougher. And I guess the the point is that the concrete just has less maintenance to do to keep it in good shape than asphalt will. So with a longer lifespan and less maintenance, that's why we think that it's worth paying a little more for.
Does the city engineer have a recommendation on that, the cost, the long-term cost?
My preference is always for concrete if we can afford it. As Mr. Welch said, it's it's less maintenance for city staff. And in the long run, that allows you to do if we're paying less money for maintenance of streets, that allows you to do other things with that money.
But when the cost is that much more, that's 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 the trade off that you have there because the analysis was is that the maintenance that you add to the the asphalt, if it's not enough cheaper, it's not worth the asphalt. But if it's enough cheaper in price, it's worth the asphalt because the maintenance cost actually comes out to total cost, less money. You know, I understand Mr. Welch's point about the 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 roughness of the road, but I can tell you that I've seen some concrete roads even here in Bel Air that are, I think, considerably rough. 45th Street from railroad track to Webb, I think is excessively rough for a fairly new road. I see 53rd Street already cracking, and I don't know what's causing that to happen, but that road is only about 10 years old. And it's got some pretty good cracks in it. I mean, they're not serious, they're not they're not about to fail, but it's got some pretty significant cracks in it. So I understand all the theory, but I'm seeing roads, concrete roads that aren't living up to that 50-year life cycle that we're hearing about.
Well, on 45th Street, it was rough from day one, and I I don't know what kind of control we have over the finish on this road. I think that's what the mayor is really referring to is that it was corrugated on 45th Street. It was it was never smooth. Are we getting a smoother finish nowadays? Is that part of what going with somebody like Kansas paving gets us? I don't remember who paved 45th.
That was Andale Construction, and it's the means and methods that they use to pour the concrete. They brought it for in my recollection, they brought it out on large dump truckloads and dumped it directly into the paver, which caused a bump. And so that's it. The there really are no smoothness specifications for concrete. There's not really a smoothness specification for asphalt. So you kind of do get it. A lot of it is in the skill of the pave the paver operator themselves and how that concrete or asphalt is delivered into the paver. So with asphalt, you have a large pneumatic roller that comes in after everything. So it rolls the concrete or rolls asphalt. So you get a lot of a lot of those bumps get smoothed out. Concrete, the traditional method, you don't have that.
Kansas paving gave us a really smooth road on Baton, I think, though.
Yes.
And I think you've talked to us before about what's wrong with 53rd is that it's the trees growing in the ditches that are tearing up the road.
That is correct. It's the those hedge trees on the side.
So if we'd had asphalt, we'd probably see even bigger cracks.
You'd see the same cracks, yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So my thoughts on this issue, the concrete versus the asphalt, it's right in that neighborhood of the the value kind of, you know, being a tie. I I think the tie goes to the concrete just based on my recollection of the numbers. But the other thing that I'm looking at is there's a homestead intersection and there's a farmstead intersection. And I think what I recall is that when we do road constructions, we typically like to do concrete intersections anyway because of the turning. I think you've explained that to us before and is that the turning really causes a lot of wear on the asphalt. I'm sure that's part of what you were thinking about when you made your recommendation for the concrete. And so my thought here is really it's kind of a tie from an economic perspective. I'm I think I'm just gonna defer to our engineers' opinion on it.
Also with the asphalt, if you notice the corner at say 45th and Oliver, those grooves are from because cars are starting and they push that asphalt just a little bit every time a car starts up or breaks. So you get the movement of asphalt with the car changing speed.
If this is a residential neighborhood, so.
It'd be a lot less traffic, so it's not gonna be as fast.
Huge changes in speed, but.
But asphalt is a more fluid substance.
Is there any thought about, you know, all the rest of the neighborhood being asphalt? And then you throw concrete in at the so those intersections now are are different?
Not for me, no.
Not a concern?
No.
And then along with that is if someday when you pave that gravel road, if they only want the asphalt, it'd be really nice to know what that was going to look like in advance if we knew the future, but. That's those are the things.
Wouldn't that be great?
Those are the things that are holding me back from the concrete is is not not knowing the whole plan.
Any additional discussion? Here and now, I'll consider a vote for accepting the alternate two with Kansas paving because I have first by Mr. Welch and second by Mr. Smith. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Nay.
Two to one, so that motion carries, is that correct?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so motion carries two to one with Mr. David. All right. One item consideration, change order request from Pearson Construction for water line lowering underneath railroad at the Woodlawn project. So we discussed this potential change order in our January 4th meeting. And since then, the January 4th meeting, Dollinger has performed some exploratory work and exposed the water line on both sides of the railroad track. MKEC has determined that it would be necessary to lower the proposed water main to avoid conflicts with existing pipe and casing. And the additional costs associated with this change order will be included as non-participating expenses and paid for out of the water fund. So Ann Stevens is here to explain the change order and answer questions. But I do have a curiosity question, and I think this might be more for Mr. Lasher to answer than anyone. That is, are we is Ted keeping a tabulation of all the the cost on this project? I know he he would do that for bonding, but is he doing that just this one? We're talking about charging to the water fund or or the sewer fund? I can't remember which, but one of those funds, which is not typical, something we were considering on bonding. So is he keeping tabs of this thing as a project as well?
I know he keeps track of them. I'll have to ask him if he's got a spreadsheet going or if he just says, because I think we've had a one of suit was one sewer and one this will be water. So we've had two, so I'll see if he can maybe get a spreadsheet in case we have additional ones.
Just to help us keep tab of the total cost of the project regardless of where it's being funded, okay?
And I can, I will ask Dakota Zimmerman to come to the next meeting to give you guys an update on the Woodlawn project because we're due for one. And I will also ask him if he can just kind of have a slide that has a summary of the change orders thus far. So you've got got kind of a recollection of that as well.
Why have we not been working on that project? I saw they're working today, but but there's been a few days that they haven't been working.
There's there's been a few items that they've been waiting for as far as answers, and that's. And so it's 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 part of the process. If you find something that you weren't expecting, you want to make sure you have the correct answer. If you've got a question, you want to make sure that's answered before you go through and take care of it how you think it should be done. And then you gotta come through and redo it, so.
All right.
But on on this, this is the the item that Mr. Welch alluded to earlier where it was an item that had been tabled. It is coming back. The contractor did do some exploratory work, both on the north side and the south side of the railroad tracks. And the good news is they found the water line. The bad news is it was not cased. The railroad does require casing right away to right away. So I don't know when that requirement was put into place, but it's not been in the last 10 years. It's probably been 20, 30 plus. And so since we are doing some work to that right away or to that water line pipe, we are required to bring it up to current standards, which is cased the entire way. So because of that, we do need to get it lowered. They did collect elevations on it. Those elevations were provided to MKEC. MKEC looked at those with the the proposed pipe and said, yes, we do need to lower it. They also looked at the valving. And Jay, when he was here in January, he wasn't sure that they were needed, but he had misremembered that we did move one of the valves. So we did go back and look at that, and he is now recommending that both valves be installed with this water main lowering as a whole. So we have more flexibility in the system and in that area in general. So that's kind of the nutshell of it. We because there was no water line or there's no casing at the end, the alternate to shove a new pipe through the old casing has gone away. So we really just have the one option now as far as moving forward with that. We don't really even really, we don't really even have the option of not doing anything because it's not cased from edge to edge. And even if we would come back and say, well, we don't really want to, the railroad would probably push us to that with their permitting process. So now that it has been discovered.
So the difference is that we were seeing in the price was the $22,000 for the valves. These are butterfly valves, I assume?
Yes, I believe so.
Mr. Smith, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I remember in our last discussion, we talked about the valves and it seemed like there were going to be some options on the valves and we needed to do some analysis in terms of how many homes would be affected, if any, by doing the valves versus not doing the valves. And that was a significant part of the cost driver. Can you elaborate a little bit on what we found there? And are are there still options to valve or not to valve? Or is it just an option to to do all the valves?
We can always not valve, but it is highly strongly recommended that we valve. We have not really looked into the option of constructing it without the valves, but there are approximately 16 properties that are affected. I know there's a few businesses and I don't know exactly how many, but approximately 16 properties that are affected by this if we just completely shut it down.
And the duration of that shutdown, do we know what that'll be?
I did not get a read on that. And I hesitate to really say anything without I I don't want to be wrong. Let's put it that way.
Because am I remembering right that that was a significant part of the cost? Like, I was thinking it was $10,000 without the valves and like 40 with them.
It was.
And so understanding what were the valves really going to get us was a pretty important part of that economic analysis.
I think it was kind of the same. It was about 20,000. So I I don't I did not look at the prior change order before coming here, which is my error. But I I don't believe the price has changed too terribly much.
What size is the pipe?
It is an eight-inch pipe. And the main cost drivers behind this is not necessarily the cost of material, it's the conditions that they're working under. So that's when you're working in a developed area versus a wide open subdivision, that's where you're seeing the differences. There's quite a bit of groundwater down there that they have to pump around and then the making sure that the waters customers are served. And since we are interrupting water services, will most likely be night work. So they're not we're causing the least disruption to the customers as we can.
The the other thing that I'm seeing is I don't I don't think the change order specifies how long the outage will be for customers, which is something that I would have really liked to see included in this.
And the the outage for customers, it will be as they're putting the valves in. So it will be limited to a one overnight, so maybe at 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock in the morning, 6, 7 o'clock in the morning. That would be the maximum outage. If they have any more outage time than they usually provide temporary service to folks.
Okay.
Mr. Welch.
The cost has gone up considerably, and I'm looking at the previous minutes. And the valves were 22,000 before. And I believe we were paying 10,000 because we were going to put in a new casing, and I can't find that in the minutes right at the moment. But I know the total was somewhere around 31,000 at the first of January, and now it's sitting at 48,000. That's a 50% increase in cost. And we're not getting anything different.
Are you sure? I thought it was almost the same to the reboard, maybe a thousand dollars more.
I'm looking for that. We don't have the price in the minutes. Have to go find the actual agenda item, I guess. Well, I think I looked at this last week and I think I found the same. Let's go here. It's not in the it's not in the agenda for the meeting.
What is the urgency if we did table it until we got that data?
They are planning on doing this work when the weather opens up. So if we approved it tonight and the weather was good, they would probably be out later on this week.
Was the January 4th meeting?
Yeah. I don't see any prices anywhere for the second half.
It should have been covered in my report if you can.
That may be where I should be looking.
That's what I'm looking at right now.
I've got too many windows open. I can't remember which one I'm looking at.
So I'm finding on page 43 of that packet, they cut and install two eight-inch gate valves was $22,000, which I think is the same.
Yes.
And then the lower eight-inch water line below existing casing was 22,500, and that's on page 45. So that'd be a total of 44,500.
Okay, I'm misremembering that and I I can't find it, so I give up.
No, it's there. It's that's the number from Dollinger that there was the and we did not have the markup for the for Pearson's, which is always going to be in contract, so.
Like I said, I misremembered.
So you're really seeing a pretty good apples-to-apples pricing here looks like.
Well, I I guess we have to do it, and I'll make a motion to approve the change order request from Pearson Construction in the amount of $48,331.50 for the Woodlawn 37th Street North to 45th North Street North and authorize the mayor to sign related documents.
I'll second.
Most of my Mr. Welch and second by Mr. David. Any additional discussion? Here and now, I'll call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries three to zero.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I do have some good news regarding. I guess, Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I do have some good news regarding Woodlawn.
That'd be nice.
The first change order that we did on the sanitary sewer, it was council approved an approximate amount of about $44,000. The contractor went in, did the work. It took them significantly less time than they had anticipated. So we requested that they reduce the change order and they didn't have to, but they did. So it went from approximately 44,000 to 27,000. So I wanted to make sure I pass that along. And we do have two change order documents for the mayor to sign tonight. One is for that 27,000 and the other is for the days associated with the project.
Do we need this council to approve the discounted price?
Great question. I know we would want to, but do we need to approve it?
That would be a question for your attorney, but since you had already approved it, it's, it is actually a good sign.
It is good.
But I did want to make sure I mentioned that as well.
Did they change the timeframe at all? It's still 15 days?
We changed it from 15 to 13. We took between myself, the construction staff of Garver and KDOT staff working on the project. We went through and itemized day by day exactly what happened from the time that the break was known to the time that it was finished. And we did itemize those days and we came up with 13 working days. I had asked for a reduction of one or two because I said from the very beginning, I'd want to replace it the entire length. But KDOT said, no, you don't get those extra days because the contractor did not have the official word until a few days later. So they got a couple of extra days and what I hoped for, but
Okay.
We, I, I just, I want to plug that in that they were, you know, being good partners and good neighbors. And they acknowledged it didn't take as much of their staff and equipment as they had originally expected.
Well, no, we very much appreciate that. So, thank you.
Didn't want to make sure I shared that.
Did you have an opinion on that?
Since the, it generally our change order language, I'd have to look at that specific one is specific. And it doesn't say not to exceed. But since the error results in kind of a windfall for the amount that we would, not a windfall, but the, the reduced prices in favor of the city, we, I, we, we would not need to have a technical motion to accept a more favorable condition. You can have one. I think the better thing to do is possibly in our change orders and the motions include not to exceed amount. So that way you're covered if the price is lower rather than.
That's what I was wondering because this was a fixed amount.
Correct.
But if the change orders say not to exceed.
In the future, that, that's what I would say. But for now, since it worked out, it was a favorable contract issue, it's, it's fine. We don't have to go back and undo it.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item F. The, we have entered government agreement with Sedgwick County to help pay for some of the Woodlawn projects. So currently the east half of Woodlawn Avenue from 37th Street to the Union Pacific Railroad rail crossing is owned by Sedgwick County. The west half, the main portion is going to north is owned by Bel Air. The intersection and going south is the city of Wichita. So Sedgwick County requested Bel Air annex the road. So Bel Air suggested if Sedgwick County would cover the five lane expansion for their part of Woodlawn, Bel Air would agree to annex county's portion. Now that the construction is underway, Bel Air has paid the local match. Staff worked with an honor agreement for the annexation to occur as well as determine the amount Sedgwick County should reimburse Bel Air for their portion of the upgrades. The agreement was signed by Sedgwick County Commission and they've already passed this agreement. And they agreed to reimburse Bel Air $572,659 in exchange for Bel Air annexing their portion of Woodlawn. So I've had, just, I know we've previously, I've said that I've had some discussions with Mayor Whipple of Wichita about this issue and how do we fairly work together in the long term? So I got an email last week that said, we will hear back from Wichita City Manager in the near future, but I was not given a timeline. I believe we can move forward with this agreement. And if Wichita decides they would rather annex this sliver of the street, they could agree to such annex after we annex it from Sedgwick County. Since we do not know Wichita's position, I believe moving forward with this agreement is best for Bel Air. Wichita's position, at least in my discussions with, with Mayor Whipple, has been that we need to do something. They understand the inequities of, of, of us owning that street and, and, and paying all the maintenance when they're getting tax revenues from their side of the street. So they, he, he gets it. And so I'm still actually waiting to see how they would like to address that matter. So we will continue to work with that issue with Wichita on how to fairly maintain these shared streets regardless of the official city within which the street resides. Are there any questions for staff on this issue? And Mr. Smith?
Just a question on the dollar amount here. Is this the number we had projected in our original projections for what the county was going to cover? It seems lower than what I was thinking we had projected, but I could be remembering wrong.
So the projection was just my hope. And so I threw, I don't remember what I threw out, but it was, you know, it was higher than that. Yeah, I think that was my, my hope. And but, so what I, what I did was knowing that Sedgwick County wouldn't say, oh, well, that's makes sense. 800,000, we'll pay that. They probably want something in writing or explaining how I came up with that amount. So I asked MKEC to, to look at, okay, how much, it's a five, that portion's five lanes. So, you know, it's basically two and a half that they have to pay for. You look at the commodities, look at the cost and come up with a really firm number of, of what truly that amount should be. And so they came up with that number, sent it over to Sedgwick County for them to review. And they reviewed those numbers, had a few questions that MKEC answered. I was included in those emails. And so I think, you know, to be, to be fair, I, I think it was done accurately and the way it should be with the engineers coming up with those numbers, not me. And they seem to accept that. And so, so I'm comfortable with, with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, concerns? I do want to say I appreciate your getting into that and, and making this come together because I know that's, that's a pretty good, pretty good chunk of money for us to help and it helps a lot. So that's great. If there's no questions or discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Smith?
I'll make a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with Sedgwick County for a governmental service activity or undertaking regarding Woodlawn Boulevard reconstruction and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. David. Any questions or discussion? Here and now, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Item G. So this is the senior services, senior citizens agreement with the Sedgwick County. So the city has been awarded $18,000 for Sedgwick County to fund Bel Air Senior Center for 2022. The 2022 Senior Center budget totals 90 or 39,010. And which means Bel Air contributes 21,010 to help cover expenses above the county grant. Any questions for staff? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the 2022 agreement for senior sitters level one by and between Sedgwick County, Kansas and City of Bel Air and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
David, I have a motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Mr. David. Any discussion, questions? Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think I've made this comment about the county's agreement the last two years. And it looks like our agreement this time has the same language in it around gratuities and favors for county officers where they prohibit you from providing anything of monetary value without limitation to any county employee or county officer or agent, which is just on a technical level kind of concerning because we do give out refreshments and things like that at city events. And we don't ask people if they're county employees or not. And so it would be hard to comply with that agreement or to kind of sign it with an expectation that we would be able to abide by those terms. And I think we've requested the county modify that the last two years, but here it is once again.
Yes, and this, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Kelly?
This would have been in our file of review last year and no changes. However, I guess the county's aging office doesn't necessarily update with legal. So what we can do is we can either table this and have this corrected or the mayor can initial with our preferred statement on that. Can sign an initial with our preferred statement on that. So.
Let me ask a question. What about de minimis issues? Is the way you read this contract language, de minimis matters fall into this or not?
I think that in actuality, as far as pursuing it, it would, it would actually, that's how they would look at it. Like i- is the value there to cause a pursuit to go to the district attorney and open an investigation? If it's, if the value of the exchange was less than a certain amount. However, the language does not read that way. The language is very black and white. So I can see the, the value of, of updating the language.
Yeah.
Here.
I'm not opposed to it. I'm just thinking from, from an enforcer perspective.
Exactly.
They're never ever going to go after this, right? Okay.
Do we have a deadline to accept this?
Brian did say they want it as soon as possible. They like to gather all of these and before they, they go into their budget season. However, I know that we at least could, could bring it back at, at the February 15th meeting. Or I'm sorry, is it the 15th? Yeah, I believe your next meeting this month.
Very good. This February 15th is the next meeting. So we have a, a motion on the, on the table right now to approve this. We could either withdraw that motion or we could modify that motion, however you'd like to go. But we can't ignore it. Okay. Mr. Smith?
I was just going to say, I think in the past two years, the county's been okay with our proposed revision. So if someone was comfortable modifying their motion to approve it as amended, I think we can assume that they would accept our amendment.
I believe so. And I'll, I would get in touch with legal because I did ask them to change our version of the agreement last year or the year before. So I don't think that we'd have an issue with that.
I, I'm fine with withdrawing it or modifying. So I, I could modify my motion as amended.
And Mr. David, are you okay with the second modification? Okay, as the motion is as amended by Mr. Welch and seconded by Mr. David. Any additional discussion? Here and now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. Executive session. I have no need for an executive session. Does anyone else? I will move on to discussions and future issues. So a regular scheduled workshop is February 8th at 6:30. We will be work, we'll want to make sure that works for everyone and myself included. Okay, that's another problem for me. Okay? So far, the city manager has presented, has a presentation by Greg Varenburg. Is it correct, Varenburg? Varenburg, okay. And he's our, our financial advisor. And he's going to talk about CCAT debt, correct? And then the year end financial report from 2021 and staffing for 2022. And if we have time, I'd like to just entertain any kind of discussion that folks would like about the Smoke Free Parks issue. If there's interest in doing that, pursuing that or not, pursuing it. You know, it's a big topic to me, but I thought something that maybe, maybe if you just saw a presentation, maybe just see where people are on that. Anybody have any other issues you want to discuss in our workshop? Mr. Smith?
Just a question. A couple of workshops ago, we talked about Aurora Park and the, the maintenance of the gravel roads. And I think an action item was taken to kind of get a cost estimate for, you know, different alternatives there. Do we have any updates on that? Would we be ready to talk about that at this month's workshop?
No, but the, they're working on the numbers. Our goal is to, so, so the year end report, basically what that's going to tell you, Ted's going to give you some dollars that you have to spend for capital improvement projects this year. So then in March workshop, you're, you'll, Anne will bring a list of proposed capital improvement streets, things like that for you to consider. So we're, we're, we're hoping that Garver can have the numbers for Aurora Park and Cozy and Hillcrest, all those numbers by the first meeting in March. So that you'll have those numbers going into your workshop for March. Because that may be something you want to consider with your capital improvement dollars.
Will Ted have the land sales projection that I asked him to put together available for next, for, for next week?
Yes, I'll make sure he does.
Okay, thank you. Any other issues? Here and now, I'll move on to adjournment. There's a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Mr. Smith, motions to adjourn. Do we have a second? Did you second, Ms. David? Thank you. Second from Mr. David. And I don't imagine anybody wants to talk about it. So we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries three to zero. We are adjourned. Let's take about five minutes, 10 minutes.